It looks like it's 6:45, so we will call our public hearing to order. Is there an announcement I should read or repeat the notice?
Recording in progress.
I saw the notice and I got verbal commitment that it was filed. So is that good enough?
It's good enough for me, I guess, yeah. I didn't see anything, so.
All right, all right. We'll make sure that we get that, that we can confirm that. I'm reasonably sure it's the case, I just don't have it in front of me. So what we're going to do on the Neighborhood Assistance Act program, we're required to hold a public hearing. So what we're going to do is, I know the applicants are in the room. We'll let you come up and make a brief presentation. We have all the documents, we've read them. So you don't have to feel like you need to go into any detail, but tell us everything you want us to know. I'll see if there's anybody else in the public, either here or on Zoom, who wants to comment. We'll close the hearing without taking action. And then you'll probably notice that on our regular meeting, under meeting business or under business, that's where we will take the action. Everybody good with that? And then we'll just go in the order that they, the backup appeared.
May I make a suggestion?
Of course.
I apologize. We have a representative here from Stony Hill Village and may we be at another meeting at 7 o'clock? May I request that they go first?
Really? Of course. We'll start with the Stony Hill Village items. Kim, let me know.
Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Stony Hill Village. As I'm sure all of you know, it is a gem of a community that serves low-income, senior, and those with disabilities. So, and it was built about 50 years ago.
Kim, let me know.
Certainly.
Would you just, for purposes of...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Will you state your name and address?
Of course. My name is Kim Becker and I am Vice President of Stony Hill Village. I live at 149 Loomis Street in North Granby.
Sure, good, thank you.
Completely forgot about that part. So, and we very much appreciate being asked to take part in the, in this grant process. We have three different opportunities for corporations to receive their tax credits. And all of them fall under the conservation portion. So that would be a 100% donation. We feel that both the water and electricity needs of our 50-year-old community could use some real updating. Showers and toilets are fairly antiquated. And the, it's not merely the cost savings and the water conservation, it is also the electricity needed to heat the water. So it is, doing those two things would be a boon for all conservation efforts, as well as our HVAC proposal. We have, again, 50-year-old, very antiquated electric baseboards with no cooling opportunity unless people have bought their own window unit. So what we would like to do is replace that with a mini-split system that will allow for both heating and cooling. And given the varying temperatures that we see and the increased number of days in a row of very high heat in the summer, we know that heat stroke is a very real medical concern for this particular population. So it would be very helpful in that way as well. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Let's, we'll start down at the end. Mark, do you have any questions?
No, no questions for me. I recognize the three grant applications being worthy cause. Thank you.
Kim, the HVAC replacement program, will that be to replace the system in the clubhouse or in the apartments or both?
This would be, we would start doing it in the apartments. But it's going to take multiple grants in order to be able to do that. It's, it is a necessary, but probably multi-year, multi-grant process.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Yeah, I guess I misunderstood it. So I thought the first grant was for the clubhouse HVAC and the other two, the toilets and the showers were for the individual units.
Oh, I'm sorry. I may have, I may have misspoken. Sorry. We're, I'm on the Grants Committee and the Maintenance Committee. Sometimes I get a little jumbled. I apologize.
But, so with respect to the toilets and the showers, those are specifically countering all of the units?
All of them, yes. All 49 units, absolutely. And again, my apologies, clubhouse versus...
No, okay. I have one more question and we'll just keep going down the line. So I hate asking this question and I hate trying to get the answer. So a lot of, what we've experienced at least recently with these grants is they get partially funded instead of fully funded. Do you guys have a, I know how hard you guys work and struggle just to get, you know, day-to-day things done. Do you have a source of funding that you can use to supplement if these only get partially funded to complete the projects?
We are very diligently working on that. We actually, because we have such great board members, they are individually reaching out to their contacts in the corporate community, folks that would be interested in a program like this in order to connect with people before it's even, you know, really up and running for this year. And we are working with Liberty Bank and Northwest Community Bank and, and some other folks to try to really develop those fundraising routes so that we can push these projects forward because they are extremely important.
Okay, thank you.
I did not have a question, Mark took mine.
I'll let you go first next time, Kelly.
All set, thanks.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Hang on, Kim, just one second. So is anybody on Zoom? Well, we don't, this is not normally the way we do it, but anybody have any questions on Zoom about this particular application or comments? All right, thank you. Who wants, Sandy, who would you like to pick next?
Oh, very nice. Well, I'm going to ask if Valley Preschool could go next.
Okay.
Jenny, it's only because you're...
Hello, my name's Heather Tolcars. I'm the Managing Director of Valley Preschool. I don't know what, say my address.
Yeah, please.
All right, so my address is 19 Heather Lane, North Granby. So Valley Preschool is a small nonprofit play-based preschool that's been in Granby for 75 years. We serve, you know, towns in the surrounding area. So we are requesting a grant to help with our scholarship program. Right now, we recognize that our tuition is a little bit high for all economic statuses and we really want to allow more families of lower economic statuses to be able to choose Valley Preschool for their children. Currently, we try to offer 1 50% scholarship for each of the classes. However, like many small businesses and, you know, we are struggling financially and don't have the ability to offer more. We would love to be able to offer more scholarships to more families. Each year, the process is that if families are looking to obtain a scholarship, they'll go through, Sandy and she will let us know if they qualify. And then we'll let them know if there are scholarships available. Moving into the future, we would love to be able to advertise that we have scholarships available for families ahead of time so that it's not wait until the enrollment is full and if not, then see if we can get someone in on a scholarship. We feel as though Valley offers a really special preschool experience that other places don't. And we feel like it's only fair for everyone to be able to give that to their children. So our proposal is for two 50% scholarships in each of the classes. We offer a threes program and a fours program. And we are hoping to be able to get some more families in that wouldn't necessarily be able to. That's all.
Any questions?
I mean, how is your enrollment in general? Is it pretty strong?
So I would say that really, probably since like the public preschool program opened in town and a lot of families have two working, you know, parents, our enrollment has been not full for, you know, a while. But this year, we are looking forward to going into the fours program, at least with a full enrollment. And we're still have some spots in the threes. This year, I think we have stronger enrollment than the previous few years opening back up after COVID. But it's not the waiting list like it used to be.
So if you advertise and you end up with a lot of applicants and Sandy does the screening, how do you decide which ones get in? Is there a process in place?
So currently, we, it's a first come, first served. If we are able to offer more, it might be something that we would like to talk about how to do a needs-based opportunity for that. But right now, it's like a first come, first served process when we can offer scholarships.
Okay, thanks.
I think you already answered my question, which is, so you're already doing the screening now. This isn't any additional work that I would ask before. All right, thank you. Mike? I'm sorry, I missed your last question.
No questions.
Peggy?
What's your current maximum enrollment? How many can you accommodate?
Currently, we can do 16 in each class. We have one threes program Tuesday, Thursday, and one fours program Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We are hoping that after this upcoming year, we'll be able to, you know, open up more classes. But right now, that's our enrollment, 16 in each.
Thank you.
No, thank you. I don't have any additional questions.
Okay. Anybody on Zoom? Any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Jenny, I think that needs your.
Hi, Jenny Emery, 71 Loomis Street. And I am the President of the Friends of Holcomb Farm. And I'm starting to feel like we're the, we're the old folks in the NAA program. Took us a few years to figure it out. But this is a wonderful opportunity to get corporations who pay corporate business tax in Connecticut to redirect some of their funds right back to Granby. So we have three proposals in this year. Two of them are under the energy efficiency, in other words, dollar-for-dollar reimbursement from the state, which, to be frank, is much easier to try to find somebody to sponsor you for. And one is a sort of a repeat of prior years. We've had HVAC improvements to the historic farmhouse on our list for, this will be the third year. In the first year, we got about $5,000. We ended up allowing the town, which was nowhere near enough to do the full mini-splits, the conversion to... We wouldn't convert completely out of oil. A house like that needs an oil backup. But the mini, the electric-driven mini-splits, which provide heating and cooling, could be much more energy efficient and effective for the house. And the first year, we got about $5,000 funded, which wasn't enough to do the mini-splits. So we allowed the town to use that to purchase a new front door for the farmhouse, which was part of the renovations with the, with the exterior of the farmhouse. And was efficiency-related because there were a lot of drafts. And then last year, we got about half of what we asked for, focusing on heating and cooling in the annex of the farmhouse. The annex has used it from sort of April through just about into November, when some of our farmhands live there, critically valuable to us. But it does not have any heating or cooling. It's got a couple of space propane heaters for when it's really chilly. And we got about half of that funded. And we have not spent that yet. The, the, we're still hoping to partner with the town to get that done. And then, and then this one speaks to the rest of the farmhouse. Again, it's not to replace the furnace, which is aging, but still operating, but rather to augment it so that we've got more energy-efficient options for heating and cooling in the farmhouse. And just a reminder, the farmhouse is owned by the town. It is leased to the Friends for our farm manager to live in it. And things like this are, you know, it's, we're happy to participate with the town in trying to seek grants that will support the town's asset. The second of the three proposals is related to winterization of the CSA barn. You'll hear a little bit more about that in my presentation tonight. But we are looking for some major renovations to the CSA barn, which is really our headquarters now. There's a small portion of it that has been sort of winterized by volunteers from the past. And we are looking to do some major renovations and looking for a number of grants. We carved out the, specifically the HVAC part of that proposal to, to fit with this particular opportunity to try to get funding for that, for winterization in a section of the CSA barn, to support us in our year-round operations and in particular, to support some more winter sales and pop-ups and winter CSAs, which is an important part of our economic viability at the farm. And then the third proposal does not fall, it falls under the 60% match, which is harder to find a partner for, but we're going to work really hard at it. And it's purely for funding, more funding for Fresh Access. Our, our Fresh Access program, where we raise money in order to buy some of the food we grow to give away to people who might not otherwise have, have access. We are searching for more sources of funding for that. And, and this request would be dollar-for-dollar, those funds would be used to purchase the food we grow to give away through our Fresh Access program. So that's, the key to that is finding a corporation that otherwise would want to support our program anyway and would like to do it for 40 cents on the dollar instead of 100 cents on the dollar. So those are our three proposals this year.
Okay, thank you.
I understand about our, your partnership with the town on having the funds for the door. Two years ago, I think you said. Is there an opport, sorry, was there an opportunity in there to use that money for the door now and possibly have that fund available later when we combine it with another grant to do a split? Because I know they do cost a certain amount and you have to get it all at the same time. You can't piecemeal into a split.
Yeah. The, the money on the door was spent. So the 5,000 we got the first year was, was spent to replace the historic door with a very energy-efficient door. This, in last year's NAA grant, we, forgive me, I don't have the exact numbers, but I think we, we got about $13,000 of a $26,000 request granted. We are still, we're supposed to get that spent this year because we put in the grant. We're learning more about the grant funds. We might have been able to give it a longer timeline, but we didn't know that when we put it in. So we're hoping to get that spent this year. But we did put in, I think we put in longer timelines on that this year in case it didn't get fully funded. It would give it a little more time to get funded next year. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay.
I have no questions. Thank you.
No questions.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for you. This is just out of curiosity. So in two of your grants, part of, you allocated part of the request to overhead or administrative costs, I guess would be a little bit. If you only get partially funded, are you required to reduce that portion of the line proportionately? Or do you, or how does that work?
There are very few, to my understanding, and Sandy, you can, I think you know about, we've had to go try to figure this out along the way. I don't believe there are any specific requirements. To some extent, the state has sort of left it to the town to manage that. What I would commit to you is that if we get partial funding and the difference is whether we get the bookkeeping and overhead covered, the Friends will, will absorb that to get the project done.
Okay. Questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Anybody on Zoom? Questions or comments on these applications? Thank you, Jenny. One last call. Anybody in the room who wants to comment on any of those applications with the Neighborhood Assistance Act? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Need a motion to close the hearing, do I? All right. And I believe it's time for us to roll on into our regular meeting, right? It is. So I will call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen order. We will start with the pledges, as we always do. I think I did it last time, so Kelly, Emily.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on our agenda is our minutes from May 6.
Move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 6.
Second.
Any questions, comments, suggested revisions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Minutes have been approved. Don't think we have any volunteers for the Conservation Commission. No old business, so we'll go right into our new business. And the first item is to receive a presentation from Jenny Emery on what the Friends of Holcomb Farm are up to.
Sorry, guys, you're stuck with me. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to, once a year, really talk to you as partners in how we're doing as the Friends of Holcomb Farm at the Towns Holcomb Farm. Just to sort of set the stage, I've got a brief PowerPoint presentation. It contains in it a video that I want to show you, which will take up, that's most of the presentation. And I'll get to that in a minute. Also, I passed out this pretty document, which I, which the town now has electronically, it can post. This is a hot-off-the-presses annual report to all of our membership, which is an audience, obviously. We've got about 700 members now. That means anybody who has donated $25 or more in the past year and/or bought a CSA share. And it includes in it a couple of pages from the audited financial statements, which I don't have the full final report yet, but I literally got these on Friday. So I want you to know I worked hard to get this to you in this amount of time. But I will refer briefly to this, but this is, the audience for this is all of the members and the general public. So it's a little, a little more flowery and friendly, which I think is appropriate, and I hope you enjoy it. I also wrote this document, which is a report to you, the Friends, the Board of Selectmen. And, and it's specifically written a little more businesslike and a little specific to our obligations to you as the owners of the property that we lease and use from you. So I'm not, obviously not going to read that to you, but I will be referring to some of the things in here. My intent with this presentation is just to add color to what you can read and hear. If you quickly want to read stuff because you want to come up with some really smart questions at the end, this is the one you want to focus on. Unless you want to look at the financial statements and Quizme, which are in the back of the other one. Okay. I told her I would do this, so. Our mission at the Friends of Holcomb Farm is to preserve, promote, and utilize an authentic New England farm. And I almost added in here a little tagline, "in partnership with the town and for the benefit of our community." And then I thought, you know, that's a conclusion that you guys should reach. I believe that, I know our, our board and the people work with us and I'll use this opportunity. Eric Lukingbeal, one of our Vice Presidents, a long-time, actually former president, is here. Anything tree trail related, I'll throw to him. Kat Cadrelle is a former board member and now our part-time administrator. And Joe Grady is our farm manager, who we just celebrated his 10th anniversary of the farm. So jump in if I say something wrong. And then when, if there are questions, I'm going to throw them to you. But is there a question now?
No, no.
Okay. So we exist because of this place. And this place is owned by the town. And so we are inextricably connected as partners in this venture. And the biggest part of 2023, to the extent that this is a report on 2023, is that we celebrated 30 years of the Friends of Holcomb Farm. And so I thought I would start with that. And we had a video created. Oops. Can we make that happen?
One sec.
One more click? Nope. There. Please say we can make it happen. There we go. Okay.
At the northern border of the Holcomb Farm is the CSA barn, a relatively new tobacco barn built by Peter and Laura since 60-plus years ago and supporting a spanking new raised seed metal roof thanks to a grant secured by Friends of Holcomb Farm in 2022. That roof promises to be the home of solar panels to meet our electricity needs before the end of 2023, paying approval from the utility company. This barn is now the heart of the Friends. It's the office, the CSA pickup, the farm store, produce-cool storage, equipment housing, and the crew room. At this time of year, it sports colorful bags of garlic hanging from the same rafters once used to dry tobacco and bustles with CSA members and store patrons enjoying the fruits of farmer Joe Grady and his crew's labor. Those labors begin well before each new so-called calendar year as scientists in jail attend to the soil quality to increase production and nutrition through dry seasons like last year and wet like this one. What is especially hard, both because chemical-free farming means invaders like fungus have an advantage and because the field work is just plain hard.
So another, another big problem of these wet years is how much fertility runs off and how like soil life is killed. You know, basically every time we have, we've had three or four heavy rains that just saturated the field and everything, just sitting in water. Well, fucking plants, soil life, they all need oxygen to live. So when you're drowning and you're deprived of oxygen, you're not living anymore. And we've had so much run off and leach out of our field and we have this much rain. So another big job, this coming, the next 100 weeks, get this stuff covered crop and come in here and use the soil and get soil samples to see where our soil is at, what we need to bring in next year, what we need to add or change to the soil, hopefully get better, more balanced soil and therefore better helping plants for next year.
Some might say drudgery, but thanks to the love for what they do, we sell up these signs of that around Holcomb Farm. The increasing extremes in the weather and the fact that with greenhouses, our growing season has grown to include weeks and months well beyond that traditional first frost is why the Friends have identified as an immediate priority renovation to the barn, renovations that will allow for an expanded year-round office and crew break room, something worthy of their immense efforts. In very early stages of exploring this and already owe gratitude to Friends of the Friends who provided these initial sketches, we envision a roughly 400-square-foot expansion by pushing out the middle third of the eastern wall of the barn, adding windows, doors, and lots of insulation, getting the area and remodeling it to allow for quality office space, a crew rest area and lunchroom, and a decent public restroom. Stay tuned as we work toward this goal. Meanwhile, in the story possible by previous donors and volunteers, CSA members and the public shop for the diverse selection of produce that Joe and team grow.
My name's Melody. I've been at the farm for three years now. The community is supporting local farming. They sign up for their CSA share before the season begins and it supports us financially to get the season started. CSA members come in once a week. They can pick up their share every week from middle of June through the end of October. Every week when they come in, it's a little bit different depending on what we have available. available in our harvest that week. So I think our CSA members really enjoy having something really different throughout the whole season. We pride ourselves on that of having a lot of variety and offering a wide range of vegetables and fruits that people don't necessarily expect. Another awesome thing that we provide in the farm store is other locally sourced goods, so things that we don't necessarily grow or produce here, local meat, cheese, chocolate, fermented goods, honey. It's nice to be able to be like a one-stop shop for our CSA members and just the general public.
One of our CSA members' favorite parts of their summer year is the chance to head into the field themselves, often with kids in tow, to pick their own. Guess what, kids? Food doesn't come from the grocery store after all, and the flatterers are a big hit, too. The workforce of the farm these days is the big field behind the barn, protected from voracious deer by a fence constructed by previous Friends and fed by the Friends' made irrigation system, drawing life from the west branch of the Samon Brook River, now nationally designated as Wild and Seen Extreme. That stream's encroachment where the field is on our radar, especially since it reminded us of its power when it destroyed the 2006 volunteer and great build pedestrian bridge that provided access to the trails on the western Highlands. New plans for the western trail access are in the works in collaboration with the Granby Land Trust from the southwest corner of Simsbury Road Bridge. Other agricultural fields stretch to the south and across Simsbury Road to the east, augmented by Granby Land Trust-owned fields to the south and generously improved and offered to the Friends. We have about 20 acres available to us now, enough at our current production line to reasonably plant and rest on a sustainable rotation. One of our goals over the past few years has been to grow the growing season, and for that, we have first had to grow some greenhouses. These marvelous tools are critical to getting spring started here in New England even before the frost is out of the ground and carrying us well beyond the so-called shoulder runs. Imagine harvesting fresh spinach and salad greens on a cold January day. Here at Holcomb Farm, that has become the norm. Just this past month, we got word that our grant requests to upgrade the energy efficiency of these greenhouses. Part of our commitment to sustainability in all that we do has been granted. This news coming in yet another rainy day sustained us yet again. For anyone driving into and through historic West Granby and Simsbury Road, there is no doubt that the changing scenery of these fields, from winter rest to spring planting and right through the fall harvest, is a gift that keeps on giving. No doubt that the attraction of the North Barn Pavilion for weddings and events is greatly enhanced by this working landscape. Even one of Tudor and Lars' old tobacco wagons has found new life, adding interesting color and a place for wedding photos to the scenery.
I love farming because it's very age-old. You literally see the fruits in your labor. I like working outside, a lot of different tasks, so you're moving around, you're doing different things. I love nature, and I love knowing that what I'm doing is not putting a cage for a friend on the earth.
Over the past several years, revenue from the farming programs has grown to almost half a million dollars, and thanks to generous donors and growing relationships with grainy agency, roughly a quarter of what we grow is made available to people who might otherwise not have access. In fact, our Fresh Access program has grown by leaps and bounds. In 2022, real, high-quality food worth more than $100,000 was distributed through our Fresh Access partners. These include locally the Granby Senior Center and Social Services, Granby Waste Now and Whatnot Community Day, and new this year, the Open Cover Food Pantry. In the region, the Healing Meals organization serving the greater Farmington Valley, the Hispanic Health Council in Hartford, and the Weill Athletic serving Hartford, Plainfield, New Britain, and Whataburger round out our current partnerships. As our Fresh Access delivery van travels around the region, these partners assure us that their clients are thrilled to have access to our produce and more recently to fruit from local orchards that we have added to the distributions. Our donors and grainy agencies are equally thrilled, we believe, to know that our Fresh Access model allows us to transform every dollar we raise into an estimated $1.40 worth of real food in the hands of people who really enjoy it. So tonight, as we enjoy the fruits of our labors, Joe and his crew, today's Friends of Holcomb Farm Board of Directors ask you to join us in thanking Joe and the crew for their tireless efforts. And we thank you, who have joined us, and many others who couldn't be here tonight, for all that you have contributed, in whatever way in the Friends' journey over the past 30 years. 30 years ago, there were falling down barns and overgrown fields. Since critical investments have been made in the buildings and the land, children have grown and learned, sheds have been built and trees planted. And today, as we hope and believe Tudor and Lars would appreciate, Holcomb Farm has nourished people through the beauty and accessibility of the land and the food it produces. In so many ways and in the context of a place that has been growing since 1756, we have only just begun, and we have plans and goals and aspirations based on the strong foundation we have today, thanks to all of you. But today is a day to reflect and give thanks for the time, talents, and treasures that you and others have shared to get us here. And as we give thanks in our own diverse ways for this meal, let's all give a great thank you to the farm crew, and then let's eat.
Just get to the next slide. Whoop. Oh, let you do it. Next slide. Okay. Whoop, back one. There you go. Thank you for indulging me. We did not get to play that video at the 30th anniversary dinner, where we had a packed house of former board members and donors and, and volunteers who came so that we could say thank you, because our makeshift AV system didn't work, and, and we're talking to the town about how we should fix that in the North Barn for us and everybody else who wants to use it. But we did have a packed house, and we had a lovely evening. The, my, the president's letter in the, in the annual report to the members starts out in terms of 2023. It was the best of times, and this was the best of times, and, whoop, am I not working And it was the worst of times. So I'll be quick on, on hitting a few of the headlines. There was a lot of stuff in the video that is very relevant to today, but there was a lot of rain last year. Farming is our resource engine. We are not completely reliant on grants and donations. In the past 10 years, since Joe came, in all year, in all of those years, except 2023, there was net income from the farming operations. And last year, the rain required that Joe pulled the plug on the winter CSA, which was a big financial hit to us. Much of the food that we sell through the winter program gets grown in the summer, so it's a sunk cost, sunk wet cost, yes. And, and we sort of knew that, but it, it became, in, in economic terms, it was very clear to us this year. So the expense related to producing that food was already sunk, but, but, and yet we still, just to emphasize how important this winter opportunity, this year-long opportunity is, with the greens that could grow in the greenhouses, we did hold two pop-up green sales in February, I think, half a day each, where people just drove by because we didn't have any heated space to do it, and we sold out completely. 150 people drove by to pick up fresh greens. So we know that the demand is there, we just, we just need to work on our infrastructure to get there. I have a prettier picture of the farm at the end, so I didn't want to stand this one too long, but I did want to comment that we were successful in getting a grant, and between the grant and our own funds, we're putting in $50,000 worth of soil supplements this year. Joe and his team are putting in $50,000 worth of soil supplements. And I said, "Do you really need that much?" And he said, "Do you have more?" So we are taking care of the land. It mentioned in the thing, we, we farm about 20 acres of town land and now about five acres of Granby Land Trust land that they've made available to us in a free lease, which we are incredibly grateful for because it means we can rest land that needs to be rested. And probably most importantly, in terms of reviewing 2023 despite that, that you saw, this year's CSA is full. So we made good on our promises to all of last year's CSA, summer CSA members, and to the farm store and to our Fresh Access partners, even though it was a really rough summer. And we are very hopeful for somewhat more cooperative Mother Nature this year, even as we're working to come up with strategies so that we're not as reliant on that. This is a picture, that's, that's farming, that's our resource engine, happy to talk about that. Our philanthropy arm is Fresh Access. This is a picture at the first congregation, the Congregational Church Open Cupboard Pantry, which joined us as one of our institutional, I'm sorry, we're calling them community partners now. And again, the Fresh Access program, we grow the food, we have partnerships with organizations, other nonprofit organizations here in Granby and in the region, so we get the food into their hands, and they put it in the hands of the people in need in different ways. Healing Meals cooks it into meals for people that are in immunocompromised positions. The Hispanic Health Council invites people in to learn to use the food and then hands it out to them. They're all slightly different in how they do it, and because we let them do it, it means that when we raise a dollar to buy food from Joe at wholesale prices and give it to these organizations, we estimate that about $1.40 worth of food ends up in the hands of the people who are eating it, and that matters a lot to us, and we want to keep that going. There's data in the report I gave you, 450 families, we estimate, had food from us over about a 20-week period. It was 30,000 pounds of fresh produce plus some fruit from local orchards. And, and I just, I, this was just an article in the Hartford Current the other day, "Food Insecurity Sees Sharp Increase in the State, in the state that ranks among the 10 wealthiest, nearly half a million people don't know where their next meal is coming from." I won't read it to you, but it's, it's a real issue, and we don't want to, you know, if we have to financially, because we can't find more grants and more partners to support Fresh Access, that's where we would have to pull back, but we hope very much that that won't happen. The third program area, we've got farming, we've got Fresh Access, and then we've got stewardship and the tree trail. Stewardship is our, is our management of your land, of the land for you. Of the 312 some acres, about 277 of it is now in a permanent conservation easement held by the Granby Land Trust. And we developed over the years and now maintain, like, apparently roughly 10 miles of hiking trails, and, and then also very much focused in the last few years on the eastern fields, where there's open meadows and long views, and creating a tree trail. So these are some of the pictures. Most, you know, I was going to say, most of this work is done by volunteers, and we're always interested in more volunteers. If they contact us, we're, we're getting better at using our volunteers, and we'll, we'll try to put you to work. But it also takes equipment. If we can find an organization to do some work for us, like a couple years EverSource took a bunch of trees down, that was great, they did it for free. If we have to do it ourselves, we raise the money and do it. This is TR Lab Works.
TR Lab Works.
Is taking down some stuff as we resurrected a pond up on the east fields. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, there are times when we sit down and we say, "We've got this issue going on," and Kirk Severance from Public Works says, "I can get a couple guys up there with a truck, and we can take care of it." So it's an area that, it's not, it's, it's a perfect example of an area that we very much partner in. If, if the town has the resources and the equipment and the personnel and can help make the trails better and safer, they come up and help us do that, and where we can, we raise the money or the volunteers, and we do it ourselves. And I figured that picture had to be followed with this one because it's such a pretty picture. The tree trail specifically, there is a five-year plan, we're, right now, we're into the second year of it. I know the plan was provided last year, if the town needs it, again, I can provide it, but we're at a little over 100 new trees have been planted and labeled. It's an educational tree trail. About 45 bushes have been planted, a few have died, we're working on replacing them. And we have a plan, the plan right now is to try to add about five to 10 trees a year. On the edges of the open meadows, keeping the views open, there, there are, there's a lot of process and procedure and management that goes into this that, that are, that some very passionate people are involved in, but it's, it's a wonderful resource. And then finally, relating to stewardship of the trails, I brought this in case anybody wanted to look more closely, but we finally got around to building a new trail, pass it around, and in particular, I wanted to point out, if this is, I don't know if this is a pointer. Whoops. Yeah. There we go. Down here, the question is always raised, we spent the last couple of years trying to figure out what to do about the pedestrian bridge that got wiped out a few years ago by one of the rainstorms. And the combination of the way the salmon brook is moving, which is a different, which is another issue, because it's slowly moving to the east toward the agricultural fields, that's an issue we're going to have to deal with at some stage, but it's, it's moving into the floodplain, and yet there's a steep rise on the other side, and the stream is now nationally designated Wild and Seen Extreme. The kinds of, "Let's get a little bit of a grant, let's get a bunch of people together, and let's put up a pedestrian bridge," that my last few years, those days are gone. And we had a talented team of, of people from the Holcomb Farm, and the Granby Land Trust helped us look into all kinds of options, and at the end of the day, the conclusion was, what it would cost to build even a pedestrian bridge, even if somebody handed us the money, we don't think it would be the right thing to do. We're talking between a half a million and a million dollars. It's a different world out there. So we instead worked with the Granby Land Trust, and the salmon, right down at the bottom here, that's where the, where Simsbury Road crosses the salmon brook. So if you're on the south side, you're now on the other side of the brook, and the Granby Land Trust owns that land, and the agreement was made, and the trail has now been built to be able to park there and hike in through that orange trail down at the bottom here, connect into Granby, or into Holcomb Farm trails and access the western trails from there rather than trying to cross the stream when the stream is high. We'll do a bunch of publicity on that along with the Granby Land Trust when we're ready. We've, we've still got another bomb bridge to build, it's, it's a work in progress, but we're almost there. We did get the map done with a lot of work by a lot of people. Okay, I'm almost done. Financials, again, some of the detail is in here. Our total revenue in 2022 was $530,000, it dropped 10% to $477,000, and some of that was, was fixed assets. So the big concern is the, is, is cash. We're not refined cash flow-wise, but we did eat into reserves, and, and we were really very focused on fixing that this year so that we don't have to pull back on our Fresh Access opportunities. I just, I thought, when I was reviewing last year's report, the contrast between '22 and '23 was, was pretty clear. This is farming, folks, and, and we hope it's one out of 10 years, not one out of every other year. We'll be having a different conversation probably. But I did want to show this. I think we're very proud of the fact that, because we're very volunteer-run and good Yankee chief, as we're supposed to be here in Granby, these are the numbers from the auditor. All of our, you know, the vast majority of our money goes into the program services, the farming, the Fresh Access, and the land management that we do. A little less than 10% is overhead and a little bit for fundraising, and the question we're going to be asking ourselves in the near future is, is that a problem? Are we not investing enough in administration and fundraising? That might be an issue for us. But as of right now, all of our donors can know that their money is, is being put to use for the people of Granby and the region broadly. And finally, I was asked to sort of make sure that I spoke about explicitly about the value, we've been, with, with the new town manager getting involved and trying to understand, well, who does what and where's the flow of revenue? I put this little chart together. We pay the town, we rent to use the farmhouse where Joe and his family We pay the town, we rent to use the farmhouse where Joe and his family live and where some of, three of our summer farm crew lived during the summer. We pay to rent the land that we use to farm and to take care of on behalf. So that's direct revenue to the town. In our agreement that we entered into near the end of 2022, we also committed to making CSA shares available through Sandy's organization to people who might not otherwise be able to buy CSA shares and also to make the senior center shares available. And I took the liberty of putting in there, I've got our wholesale numbers over on the left, but if you use the 1, the 40% multiplier, in terms of what's the value of the food that we give away to these people in Granby through our Fresh Access program, those are the numbers and the value. I also captured, just from 2023, we put the new roof on the CSA barn, 40,000 of it came from a previous NAA grant. The rest came from Friends Funds. And we put the $5,000 into the new door and the other 13 is sitting in the bank account, ready, ready, willing, and able to go into more HVAC improvements in the farmhouse. And then the other stuff we do, it's, you know, we think we're good partners, we think what we do with, for the town and with the town is priceless. We also think the partnership with the town is getting better and better all the time and we're very grateful for it. I mentioned at our annual meeting the other day, and I should mention to you that since the town has added first a part-time person and now a full-time person who is focused on putting the campus and the buildings, the rental of the buildings to use, it's just wonderful to see so much activity there. And we are, Kat has met with Jamie Sava on your team so that we can talk about, you know, we're two separate organizations, but we're united around this property and how do we work together on things? And when we're doing something that we want to promote, Jamie's using the Parks and Rec email list to help promote it more widely so that more people in Granby understand this is their asset as well. Let's see, last. One more movement, two more movements? Doesn't want to move. This was a, I wanted to thank everybody. There's everybody to thank. But I wanted to leave this picture, this was like three days ago. I kept looking at that picture of the water-soaked ground and the dirt all messed around and I thought, I can't leave people with that message. So this is Joe on his factor just the other day. The fields are growing again, this Farm Store opens June 11th. We are ready, willing, and able to move ahead. So with that, I'm, that's, I'm done with my formal presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and the team with me is happy to join in.
I was very thorough, Jenny, very chatty. You guys do great work.
It's a passion.
Definitely, yeah, no, amazing work. One question I had is, we had the solar farm company come in talking about all the greenhouses that they had to get rid of at some point when they clean, you know, they cleaned up the land. Was that anything that the farm?
We ran up, I ran up that day and gave them our name and number. I ran over to Joe the next day. Have you heard anything?
I talked to him on the phone and now we're texting. Now he seemed really nice and John Grapple, who I was talking to. Really sweet on the phone. We're trying to still pay to get arrangements to go and take a look.
So we're going to try?
You can't say no to them, but they're not exactly what we would use at the farm, but they're free.
If Joe comes next year, he's walking around, he's got to visit the ball, our greenhouses and stuff.
So you get the kids working?
We're trying.
That's it.
Well, I want to start with by just repeating a thank you. So I was able to attend the annual meeting on Sunday and thank some of the volunteers or all the volunteers who were there and the board members. And it just caused me to reflect and I would ask everybody to take the time to reflect on just what we've all been able to accomplish, really for decades out there, but how we've been able to kind of leverage it in the last five years or so. If you, if you think about everything that's going on in the farm, you know, we're producing revenue out there for the town, we're providing space for people to meet and gather, we're not only preserving old farm buildings, we're actually operating an historic farm, we're providing food for people who can't otherwise afford food, we're stewarding hundreds of acres of land and not just stewarding it, we're actively maintaining and improving the trail system. It's something that no one of us could do on our own and the town certainly couldn't do it. And so without the work that everybody is doing, that, I think when we had those discussions, I used the phrase like it's kind of the heart and soul of Holcomb Farm, and I really, I really do think it is part of the heart and soul of our community. And it's a fundamental part, whether people express it, actually using the words Holcomb Farm or not, of why we love to live in Granby and why we moved here. So very grateful for the work you're doing. Now, I do have two quick questions, and if they're not quick, we don't have to do it today. So the greenhouse efficiency grant, remind me the source of that, where did that come from?
The, through the NAA program, we put in a, one of the, we're supposed to operate the electricity, has the fans blow things around. And Nassau Financial Group out of Hartford, where our own Ed O'Hanison works, and I'm sure he was part of it, they picked us. And so they, and this is information for anybody who's interested, they called their accountant and said, what's our tax liability for 2023 to Connecticut going to be? And they told them, and they turned around and said, okay, that's how much money we have to support your projects. That's the way this can work. So anybody else who's, anybody who knows anybody who has businesses who pay corporate tax, see me, because I'll help you, I'll help walk you through that. But that Nassau Financial Group has funded that. And in fact, they're sending a group of employees out June 5th to volunteer and work at the, part of what they want to do is not only commit financially, but to get their own employees engaged, which is really cool.
And the other question I have is when we were having, we were having the discussions about putting the agreements together and we had some discussions around the idea of you guys focusing on a separate, like proactive capital drive to sort of, these are my words, but to sort of build an endowment fund in addition to all the regular money you got to raise every year just to do the operational stuff. I don't need that answer of why you haven't done that in the last year, but that is still something that's on the horizon and something we can help with.
Absolutely. We formed a fundraising and grants committee, which we hadn't had just last fall, and just added somebody to the board who has extensive experience in that. You gave me a chance to mention two dates that, the first focus right now is two fundraising events specifically for Fresh Access this year. One is the Holcomb Hoedown, which will be built around line dancing classes and lots of family-friendly fun at the farm on August 28th, or, I'm sorry, August 24th. So anybody who's listening, mark your calendars and watch, there'll be lots more information. And then the Harvest Dinner and Auction on August 19th. And in both of those, the first line of attack is we're going to be going out and looking for corporate sponsors, because that's really how you make money on things like that. But very quickly thereafter, the combination of, we're waiting to hear on a major grant related to the barn, but with or without the grant, we need to raise money if we're going to renovate the barn. We need to find more sustainable sources of funding for Fresh Access. And I can't think of what the third thing was right now, but anyway, we need to package that up and go start talking to people. And just so that you know, we can accept stock, we've set it up, we can accept appreciated stock now, we can accept bequests, we just haven't, I hope next year I'll tell you that we have an active campaign out there setting that up.
The answer to my question, I got it. All right, thank you.
Any video that ends with, let's eat? Oscar award-winning nominee.
You know, I need to, I was going to change that so it's more general, but that was for that night's dinner and I didn't get to show the video one.
So want to shout out to you for the work and those of you who helped with Holcomb Farm, us. Unbelievable asset for the community. Shout out to Joe, very kind when I took a trip out there with Jenny, we walked some of the fields, we walked, and for me, it was a learning experience. And then also a shout out to Kimmy. She had walked the accounting that's on the town side. And it may be known to all the members of this board, there are seven revenue sources that the town can connect directly to Holcomb Farm. The North Barn rentals are by far and away the largest, and we have a total stream of income on an annual basis of about 225,000, with the North Barn being about half of that. Daycare, investments, farmhouse rent, field rent, workshop fees, two coyotes rent, all total that 225. The bad news is we spend an equal number supporting the expenses and the capital and so forth. So I now understand the vigor at which you have to go to, to either raise money for your side of things or pursue it on the town side, because it's not an obvious source or a regular source. But we'll try to get some type of regular cadence on that. But again, for those of you who probably knew it long before me, Holcomb Farm is just an unbelievable community asset. It's something that I haven't seen in any other Connecticut community, and I've been around a while. So kudos to everybody here for that. So thank you.
I'll just echo what Mike said. We moved to town, I think a few years before the town got involved with Holcomb Farm, and the transformation over 30-plus years has just been remarkable. You know, it went from buildings that were nearly falling down to just a gem of the community right now. So wonderful job, no questions.
I appreciate you opening up Trail Access to the Western Highlands again, since that tragic loss of the footbridge that we had built. Is it still possible to cross the brook at that location during low stream? Or do you frown on people just wanting to cross the stream bed?
I don't know, Weddlin's people are listening, members.
We don't frown on it. We're not marking it as a trail anymore, but certainly when the water's low, we don't, and the horse, horse riders do cross, in fact, we prefer the horse riders cross the stream rather than going down to the new trail. So, but the water hasn't been very low in a long time.
I'll grant you that. And then for the buildings that you have on the property that were left there originally, I know you've selected the farmhouse and the main barn and North Barn we've renovated, but all the other buildings on the property, do you have a plan for their use or are they just aging gracefully in place?
Well, the buildings on what I call the main campus, there where the farmhouse is and Big Barn and the North Barn and the workshop there was built with, the Friends built that with capital funds back in 2008, 2009. So that's not that old. But those buildings are there and the town is controlling those and renting those for use. And I know that Mike and Mark and all of you are working on capital needs, including what those buildings might need. In our agreement with the town, we have taken, we have assumed responsibility, the one building we have assumed responsibility for is the CSA barn, which is over by the Methodist Church. You still own it, but if we, we put a new roof on it, if we want to renovate it, we've got to raise the money to renovate it. The other stuff, it's, it's the towns to manage, but we're, we do rent the farmhouse and we want to partner with you as much as we can. If there are grants that we can get that you can't go after yourself, we would help you with those. But those need to be part of your capital management plan.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yes.
All right, any other, any other questions? Joe, you want to say? Brett Moffa, ironically enough, knows of anti-rain dance. Do you want him to do?
No, I don't, I don't want to drag this on any longer. Jenny talked about all mostly important things. Not too many changes, I mean, we hope to have a completely different outcome this year, but not too many changes otherwise. We have, it's about the same Fresh Access commitment. We still haven't shut down CSA sales, we're a little sluggish compared to the previous five or so years. But we're finally, we're at a place where we're going to have more CSA members than last year, which after having the year we did and raising our prices, feels pretty good about, you know, shows people appreciate what we're do, what we do. And that's pretty incredible that we can not have watermelon, have terrible tomatoes and just have, we missed, we're missing so many things last year, but still people are coming back even though we raised the prices. So that's great. Just that potato digging, harvesting potato video was painful to watch. Because we, one of the silver linings, I think Jenny mentioned in the last year was, there were a lot of reasons to feel excited for 2024, even though we, I lost money for the first time and it was, it was just painful. But we got some huge grants. So the field inside the fence had incredible flooding and we've spread about 280 yards of compost in there through a state grant. Couple weeks ago, I got, picked up a potato harper, digger, potato harvester. So like, we're not going to be on our hands and knees picking potatoes, digging around for potatoes in the ground. And we just, just today, I unloaded another irrigation traveler, or a giant sprinkler. So in the drought years, it's either drought or rainy years. So now we'll have a giant sprinkler going tomorrow at our Granby Land Trust fields and then a giant sprinkler going at our home field. So we got this insurance, most, every other year, those, you know, $17,000 pieces of equipment will sit in the barn. This year, we'll probably be using them nonstop. And those were, we got with help of a grant. But yeah, we're trying to think of any.
So before I let you get away, Jenny didn't mention that Joe and Emma are celebrating their 10th year at the farm, which is incredible. I remember the day you joined.
Yeah.
You, you guys are the heart and soul of the heart and soul, if you will, right? If that makes any sense. So first of all, thank you and make sure you pass your, our thanks on to Emma. And can I get you to commit here tonight for another 30 years?
Yeah, no, no, we're not going anywhere. The, like, yeah, I've been, 10, the past 10 years, looking back, it's, pardon, it's town, I remember thinking about the town stuff. I was so pissed at you guys the first couple of years. I, there was so many things.
All right, all right.
But I was just glad we didn't know each other. And now, now I text, you know, Kirk and Chris on the, whenever something comes up and that, things are like, it's all lovey-dovey now, but mostly just because we didn't, I didn't know anybody then. And now, like, their relationship is great and I'm so appreciative of that and thankful for it. But yeah, there's a lot, proud of what we've done the past 10 years, but we're, no, 10, 10, 20 more.
Answer your question, Joe, right? Only 10 or 20?
30, well, 30 might be in Florida, we'll see.
You or me?
No, we are, yeah, we're here for good.
All right. Seriously, thank you for, for, both of Joe's daughters were born in the farmhouse. There you go.
Good. Any farming specific questions?
I just, I had one more comment that I forgot, because Joe was a part of this too. And I try to think about what I would be thinking if I was sitting in your shoes and say, well, what about our other agricultural producers, you know, is this, are we competing against them? That whole sense is gone. We are, we work very well with the other agricultural producers, we carry some of their products in the store. And I think, I think by and large, everybody understands, we are about growing the pie, not fighting over the pieces of the pie. And the pie is, for everybody in the region, they should see Granby as a place they want to come and get really high-quality, locally grown or locally produced products. And we want to be a central part of that with a whole bunch of our neighbors and friends in the ag community. So that's an important part of our strategy that I forgot to mention.
All right, thank you, Jenny. All right, if there are no other further questions, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is... on the agenda, which is a presentation from the chair of our agricultural commission. Heather, come on up.
That was a really great, this is going to make this really, really easy, I think. Thanks for having me. So we'll keep the good vibes going here for this. The Granby Agricultural Commission identified two missions in 2023. One was lending, just throwing our support toward the forever preservation of Holcomb Farm, which became a reality thanks to all the hard work of everyone in this room. And the other is, was the passage of a town right-to-farm ordinance. So I'm here tonight to put forward a draft of the ordinance for your consideration. And if, I think you all have it, if I have one copy here, if anyone needs one. So, you know, we just talked about this. As displayed by the overwhelming townwide support for the preservation of Holcomb, you know, you all are aware already of the role agriculture plays in our community and how deeply rooted this and land preservation is in Granby's identity. Those of us with the historical context of agriculture in Granby should play a key role in preserving that identity as new generations and families continue to cycle into the community. The number-one way to preserve farmland is to keep it a viable farm. Promoting local farm viability can only happen with the support of a farm-friendly town government, which I believe we have. And I, you know, wanted to make sure and say, I'm really grateful for the town's efforts to include Ag Commission and agriculture community voices in important discussions like the one we're having here tonight. As of today, approximately 31 Connecticut municipalities have adopted right-to-farm ordinances, which is a policy statement that we as a town support and encourage local agriculture. So what an ordinance can do is help inform new and prospective residents that they're moving into a farming community, limits farm, non-farm neighbor conflicts by limiting circumstances under which any such farm operation may be considered a nuisance, helps provide guidance to municipal enforcement officials on how to respond to issues related to the nuisances covered in the state right-to-farm law. The local ordinance echoes Connecticut's right-to-farm law, which states that no agricultural or farming operation, place, establishment, or facility, or the operation thereof shall be deemed to constitute a nuisance, provided the operation is following generally accepted agricultural practices, those practices are determined, have been determined by the Connecticut Commissioner of Agriculture. So it's important to highlight the right-to-farm ordinance does not negate or diminish the authority of local regulatory boards and commissions, things we already have here in place in town. It simply reaffirms and underscores our town's commitment to agriculture and identifies farming as an accepted and valued activity and resource. It also ensures the full understanding and alignment of our commitment to agriculture across our town offices. For example, a year and a half ago, a family farm across town was issued a cease and desist by a town official because a neighbor complaining about noise coming from one of their machines. The zoning board of appeals ultimately reversed it, but that's an example of something that could be avoided altogether with a right-to-farm ordinance in place. The language in this proposal in front of you is based from a model ordinance provided by the Connecticut Farm Bureau Association, and this is what's utilized by most Connecticut towns who have adopted the ordinance. A couple last notes. An article that was just, I wanted to share this, an article that was just posted today by CT Insider in the New Haven Register, I'm not sure where it was sourced from, they stated that Connecticut lost about 460 farms over five years between 2017 and 2022. That's according to the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And there's many reasons for that, but it's a note worth knowing as we talk about the future of farming in Granby. And finally, many towns that have adopted this ordinance have put up signs, and you may have seen one entering Southwick. They say, for example, Granby is a right-to-farm community, and I feel like that would be something we could look into should this ordinance pass. I think there would be widespread support of a visual reference that captures our pride in our farms. So with that, I don't know if you need a minute to read the proposal, but I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Heather, before we do that, before we shift the precision focus on the ordinance, is there anything else on the Ag Commission that you want to, I should have started here. So we're, we started here, one of the first few chairs that have done it, but we've started to invite the chairs of our different boards and commissions to make annual presentations to us on what did you get done last year, what do you kind of see going forward? Is there anything on those things that you want to explain to us while you're here before we focus on this?
I, you know, one of the main focuses of the Ag Commission is advocating for our farms and making sure, you know, Granby Open Farm Day is something that our members rally around every year. It's something that we work on all year round. We start talking to our farms about planning. We've already had our, you know, initial outreach earlier this year. We tend, we head to Ag Day at the Capitol to represent Granby. We're one of the only towns, like Ag Commissions, that set up at Ag Day at the Capitol. We had some conflicts this year, but consistently every year, we set up down there and represent all of our farms to all of our state congresspeople. And, you know, so we, you know, moving forward, I think there are some things that we want to, you know, talk about. I look at Shirley because she's on the Ag Commission with me. You know, moving forward, but yeah.
I'll come back to me. So, because I have either the fortune or the misfortune of being a land use lawyer, so I actually do have a lot of questions and problems related to that ordinance. But let's, so let's start with Mark.
I'll jump in on the agricultural commission aspect of it, and I'd like to say thank you for having Farm Day. I always appreciate it. Come fall, looking forward on my calendar on which day is going to be Farm Day, and which farms are going to participate this year. So I always appreciate that, and I know what a boom it is to getting people from outside of our community to come and visit Granby on that day.
I will say, this past year was one of our most well, if not our most attended Open Farm Day. Our farmers were just inundated with cars and how to park them, and a lot of out-of-town visitors, I mean, that day alone brings in a lot of out-of-towners. And I love Open Farm Day because, you know, one of the, especially for newcomers in town, a lot of the questions we get asked are, is there a farmer's market? Where's the farmer's market? And Open Farm Day is just this constant, this annual reminder in the very best way that our farms are open to you, and virtually all of our farms have a store on property that you can visit, you know, that Granby is kind of one big farmer's market. So, you know, we continue to get the word out about that, and we'll continue to keep advocating and celebrating our farms and, you know, always looking for ways to engage our smaller farms, even farm stands, yeah, any way to promote the ag community.
I always thought it would be cool to have like a.
So before we go to Joe, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said this at the very beginning, because I'm going to ask you this question, so I want you to think. So, actually, adopting an ordinance is a formal process we have to go through. So we couldn't adopt permanent ID if we wanted to, we had to have a hearing and that kind of stuff. So one of the questions I'm going to ask at the end is from our board, is there the appetite to proceed further towards that goal? Because I think there'll be work to do between there and between where we are and getting there. And so I apologize, David, but that, when we end, that's going to be the goal tonight, is to get some consensus on whether this idea is something we want to proceed further. So, sorry, go ahead.
Now, I started to say that I thought it would be cool to have like a trolley to take people around, a hop-on, hop-off trolley to all the different farms that were participating. There's probably 100 reasons why we can't do that, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Maybe they can hook up a wagon and one of the tractors.
On the ordinance, I'll ask a legal question.
Please, please.
Why do we need an ordinance if we have a state statute that pretty much says the same thing?
Yeah, so, you know, it helps to reaffirm the intent of the state right-to-farm law. It provides guidance, especially to new farmers, it provides guidance to new residents, and, you know, and again, it helps sort of reaffirm the identity that is so deeply rooted in Granby, that I just think it's our job to maintain that. I also think farming is a huge challenge right now, and that, you know, as I just, what did I say? That article said we've lost 450 farms. We can't make it, we're not out to make it harder, but whatever we can do to make it easier, to make it more welcome, you know, to make it, to show that we value our farmers, I think we should do that. I, you know, in something that's somewhat light-lifted, and I don't mean to minimize the work that it's going to take to get done, but.
Yeah, I guess the concern is always that we don't adopt something that conflicts with the state statute and just confuses people. And I haven't compared the language in the statute and the ordinance to know if that's the case, but that would be something we have to take a look at.
Local regulations would still stand, so it doesn't negate anything that we already have in place.
I surrender my time to the gentleman land use attorney.
I'm going to go last. Do you have any questions here?
I do not have any questions.
I appreciate all you do, and I come at this from two different roles. I moved here from a city, basically, when I was 17. My parents had built a house up in West Granby off of K Street, and we complained a lot about big flies from the horses across the street and the smell and stuff like that. But having lived here for longer than I want to admit now, I've really come to appreciate the little farm stores or the, even during Christmas time, there was something up at the vineyard up in North Granby where they had some local farmers and meat producing. I'm just overwhelmed with joy when I find locally-produced, locally-sourced food. So I think if we could promote that, and I'll leave it to the lawyers to run our idea of a nice sign, but I like the idea.
Yeah, so actually, one of my questions you already answered, which was where did your draft come from? And I was actually surprised at the answer that it's a model ordinance developed by the State Department of Agriculture, because I did take the time to compare them, and there are significant differences between what the draft ordinance says and what the state statute says. So that's something we have to be very careful, just as I share that concern, that we have to be very careful not to create something that either conflicts with or creates ambiguities, and the devil will be in the details to make sure we're protecting what we really want to protect and not opening the door to things that we were thinking about. So that's not negative, that's just, so that, so thank you for answering that question. I guess most of my other questions are not worthy, they're detailed lawyer questions, they're not worthy of our time tonight. A question for you before I get back to the board. So does, is the Ag Commission willing, and do you have the capacity to help us do the work to get to another draft? If we need to do research, if we need to compare ordinances, if we need to gather information, if we need feedback on what, you know, we wanted to say and not say, is that something you guys are prepared and ready to do?
Yep, absolutely. I should also mention that, so the draft I put before you is sort of, it's part, the model that was provided, it's also part, I looked at East Windsor, I looked at a couple towns that I felt were similar-ish to Granby and kind of followed, followed those examples. And I'm not a lawyer.
Okay. So, Mark, do you, no commitments that we would ever necessarily adopt or not adopt an ordinance, but are you comfortable with exploring this issue further?
Yes, I am comfortable exploring it. I'm sure picks concerned about us having a town ordinance that says, in essence, the same thing as the state statute.
Yeah, I'm willing to take a look at it.
Excellent answer.
Yes.
How many other towns have one?
31.
I'm okay with it.
I am too. Are you willing to sort of take the lead to be the liaison between you?
Oh, okay.
Between our board and the Ag Commission?
Yes.
Mike and I will help sort of.
Yeah, absolutely.
Outline a process, but, yeah. Okay. All right, so that's what we're going to do. We will get together here and figure out a process to have Peggy interface with you guys to start to work through what issues would we have to resolve to get a draft draft in front of us. And one of the things I will ask you guys to think about is, in my head, once we got it ready, we don't have to do this one way or another, we would consult with the planning commission and the development commission, once it's at a draft, just to get two more sets of eyes on it, so, but we can work those details out.
I would note that there's another retired land use attorney in the room that might be a resource for us.
He's covered with, he's covered with poison ivy. Pulling weeds at Holcomb Farm.
Well, he needs a little.
I'm sure that's pretty sad.
There's nothing to see here.
Heather, thank you very much. Anything else need from us?
That's it, thank you.
All right, all right, thank you, good work. All right, the next item on our agenda is consideration of the proposals for the Neighborhood Assistant Act tax credit. Hasn't been that long ago, so remember, we had the public hearing, board members, does anybody have any additional questions or concerns? If not, the backup contains a proposed motion to move on to the next step in the process.
I will move that we approve the seven program proposals received for the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistant Act and AA tax credit program, and direct staff to complete the application process on or before July 1st, 2024.
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Scott, will you just do us a favor, and can you prioritize like in the next day or so to confirm what I think is true, that the notice was in fact covered?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Because they have to go back, we have to do that very quickly, to me, thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is consideration of approval of a list of accounts to be transferred to the suspense list. Mr. Ross, so this is item number.
Yes, let me provide a little bit of background. So this is what we call tax collector and fining its housekeeping. It is done once a year, it is usually done just before the year end, and it's to get the books accurate. We recognize that there are some accounts, predominantly motor vehicle, that are difficult to collect. They will still be collectible in the system if somebody goes, somebody who owns one of these motor vehicle bills goes to register another vehicle, it'll be picked up, will be forced to come back to Granby and make good on their bill. But we've made multiple attempts to collect this, starting with the issuance of the tax bill, a legal ad, a done-in notice and so forth. In some cases, we've used a marshal or a collection agency, and my personal favorite is, one day, I would like the state legislature to do away with motor vehicle taxes entirely. However, that's $1.2 billion of state right revenue. My last comment is, I was just doing a little bit of math, and this is a testament, really, to the townspeople who pay their tax bills and to Lauren, who stuck, who runs, is our tax collector. To give you an idea, $26,824.66, which is right in the middle, you produced a small amount to the suspense list in 2018 of just under $21,000, and your high amount was in 2020 of just under $30,000. So this is right in the middle. It represents 1/20 of 1%, which is quite excellent. To give you an idea, the community that I left has a tax base about three times larger, but their suspense transfer annually is about 20 times larger. So proportionately, this is a fairly phenomenal number. But again, we've taken our best efforts to collect this, we've been unsuccessful, we move it to suspense, that doesn't mean it's not collectible, it simply means our books are more properly stated when we do the audit. So I would recommend making the motion to move this to suspense.
Is that motion actually a legitimate?
It do not seem it.
So is the proper motion just to move that? So is the proper motion just to move that dollar down to suspense?
Yes, to accept, uh, the recommendation from the director of revenue for the 2024 suspense list of $26,824.66 so that the town of Granby's books may be properly stated.
Before I ask for motion, any, any questions? Concerns?
No.
Mark?
I have a question. Just do we, do you anticipate that that number will go up as we start to have more of the apartments populated? Will that be a driver of increase in collection?
Well, I, I think, um, the answer is minimally yes. If you have more people and more motor vehicles, you're apt to take a little bit of a, of an increase. I, I wouldn't say it's related, um, specifically to apartments, but just more motor vehicles.
Any other questions? If not, I would accept the motion.
I move that we move to, uh, the suspense list, a value of $26,824.66 as indicated by the suspense list in the attachment.
Second. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? All right. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Really again, Kimmy?
That's correct.
Could one year you not get this?
Every single year. As long as I'm here.
All right.
Let me, let me do a shout out, uh, for, for Kimmy by, by all means. For, for those of you who are watching, uh, year after year, uh, again, the town of Granby with the excellent work by finance director Kimmy Chung, uh, uh, just has phenomenal, uh, reporting. And I'll just read the first paragraph. The Government Finance Officers Association is a professional organization located in Chicago, Illinois. The state GFOA is located out down in Stanford and they put forth, um, basically, uh, promulgations or for, that's a fancy word for rules and regulations that finance directors and communities need to live by. Whether it's how to book a tax receivable, whether it's how to collect something, whether it's how to state leases. And Kimmy is as proficient and as technically proficient of a finance director as I have ever run into. And, and this first word really, or this first paragraph really encapsulates what she does. Uh, the GFOA said they are pleased to notify the town of Granby that the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023 qualifies for GFOA's certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So again, a shout out to Kimmy, um, but this is also accomplished by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance who do the things that is necessary to allow Kimmy to do their job. The support of the staff, uh, in Kimmy's office is exceptional as well. And it's all about the consistency in decision-making, both at the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen and in the finances office, as well as transparency to the community. So again, I, I don't want to underscore this, um, in a, in a, in, in any other way than to say the community is blessed to have a, a government that is as transparent as it could be recognized by the organization that writes these rules and regulations. So hats off to Kimmy Chung tonight. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you. So save that before we move on off of this thing. I am also pleased and proud and honored to let you guys know that, uh, this Thursday evening, Kimmy is going to be honored by the Granby Simsberry Chamber of Commerce as Granby's public servant every year. Um, uh, they're gonna do it at their annual meeting and dinner. Um, Mike and I are going to attend as the chamber's guests. Um, I'm really looking forward to it. It's very, very well earned. And so there may be some limited additional seats available for you guys. If you want to go, just let Mike know so we can find out and make arrangements. But well deserved honor. Thank you, Kimmy.
I'm honored. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Next item on the agenda then is the, uh, town managers' report starting with the budget updates.
Again, the budget update was provided, uh, to the each member as part of the package. Uh, Kimmy includes highlights of revenue. That's the April 2024, uh, budget operations report. And I won't, uh, go into the, uh, uh, details of it, but, uh, property taxes are overperforming. Uh, state education revenue, which comes from special ed and tuition is underperforming, yet, uh, state revenue sharing is overperforming as well as building permits related to Station 280. Short-term investments due to a high fund balance and an increased rate are all overperforming. Long story short, two and a half million of overperforming funds, less 1.2 million of underperforming funds as mentioned above. Uh, and you have what, uh, what Kimmy has articulated in her, uh, budget message. Jumping over to the ARPA, as you're aware, uh, we continue to look at ARPA. There's about a million six and change that needs to be reallocated. Uh, Mark and I are working closely on that. We anticipate having something to do in all likelihood for the next meeting, uh, and then Mark can articulate the, the process to, uh, put that in front of the board.
Any questions for either Kimmy or, or Mike on the financial portion? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the town managers' non-financial portion.
I'll highlight a few items, uh, because even though this was produced on the 15th and we're only five days later, we've had, had a few things changed that I want to bring to everybody's attention. The highlights, uh, for the folks who may not have had a chance to read the report. Um, one, I'm looking at grants management, risk management, human resources and purchasing as critical skills that this town, um, would probably benefit from. So I continue to have a discussion and in the future, maybe, uh, aligning some of that ownership with existing job responsibilities and I'll communicate that to the board at an appropriate time. I work closely with the board's HR director, Jen Brown, and we're seeking organizational synergies. We always try to look at, um, where it makes sense. Krista will be coming on full time July 1st, so I've linked her up with the board. Um, as much as she can spend a lot of time with me in negotiations and HR issues, she will also benefit from the institutional knowledge that the board, uh, has and will try to bring some of that home to the town. Flipping over to page two, um, talked about one of the goals is to always look at the town hall organizations seeking to build resiliency and redundancy. So that's what I hope to come forward to you at a future date. We have settled the public works contract. They ratified that unanimously today. So we will now ready the contract for the board of selectmen's approval and that should be on June 3rd, uh, for at least you to consider it. You have 30 days after ratification to, um, approve that if you so desire, but we'll get that to you so that you can have the opportunity to digest it. We continue to negotiate with police and town hall workers. Thanks to Scott, uh, we've approved, uh, or they have approved, we have a tentative agreement on that. Um, we are in the process of sending red lines back and forth. So we are probably a couple of meetings away before we get that to you in the form of, uh, we have to get the red line back to them. They have to have a ratification vote and then we will send it to you. That in all likelihood might be June 17th or July 1st, but it's coming up and that's pending ratification. And then we have one more meeting this week for police. I'm mildly optimistic we'll settle that one as well. And we should have that to you after they ratify sometime on July 15th or August 5th. So we will have all four contracts locked up, uh, in a relatively short amount of time. Last thing I wanted to communicate to the board is we have, um, accepted a subscription or, or placed a subscription. It's a small amount of money, $250 a year and it, it's for a fraud hotline. Uh, this is a recommendation of our external auditors that we have taken here in Granby and, uh, it's basically a confidential source for either residents or employees, uh, again confidential, so I wouldn't know who they are, to report things to the town for us to look into. It could be, uh, misconduct. It could be violation of ethics. It could be conflicts of interest, accounting errors, unfair labor practices, you name it. If it comes to us, uh, the individual may submit it to www.fraudhl.com. They could do it by fax. They could do it by email. They could do it by telephone and that will come to either myself or Krista for an appropriate investigation. If there's criminal conduct alleged, we turn it over to the police department and periodically I will update the board if we get anything. But I think that's a good step to open up the lines of communication for either employees or citizens who so choose. And that link is on both the town managers' page and the human resources page. And that was a, a development that occurred since I produced the report on the 15th and I just wanted the board to be aware of it. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. I'll just say again, thank you, Mike, for not just the work you're doing, but the work you, you put into keeping us informed on it.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. I do have, uh, just a few things to report on tonight in no particular order. Just a reminder, our next open house will be June 10th, um, 7:30 to nine in the morning and seven to eight 30 in the evening. Catherine's going to help me push out a, uh, notice this week and we'll do one more, at least one more between now and then. So, um, the second thing is I just, Saturday this weekend really was just a reminder to me and I just wanted to give kudos to the people who are involved. And I'm sure this is only a small example, but it's just stuff that I either participated in or witnessed of our community coming together, people giving and helping each other. Just, so they did another cleanup at Stony Hill, um, this weekend. There was numerous organizations and individuals involved. They had more help probably than they really needed over there. It's just great to see. Um, the Granby Lions sponsored the shred event. So they not only paid for the shredding, but managed to hold the drop, drop off and delivery. Our public works team did an open house at their, their facility and I just happened to be there because that's where I was helping on the shred day and, and the, uh, the smiles they were putting on kids' faces when they could come in and touch the trucks and see stuff. It's, uh, kudos to them. And then kudos to the Granby Land Trust and Dave Emery who, who put on a, um, a hike and an educational talk about, um, beavers, um, at Dismal Brook Preserve and Park. And, um, a beaver came out. I don't know how he got him. In the afternoon, you don't normally see beavers. And he came out and swam around. He slapped us down and swam around. I don't know how Emery got it to do it. Anyway, that's, I'm, I'm sure there are lots of other things. There is every day in Granby going on, examples of people pitching in to helping each other. I just wanted, few kudos to those that I saw. Um, and then the, the final thing is, um, um, ARPA. So, um, we, uh, we're gonna, we'll have an item on our agenda on June 3rd. This is what I'm thinking. So if you guys, um, want to do it differently or have other thoughts, uh, let us know. So we're doing exactly what we said. We had that list of priorities. We're mostly through all of them and what the report will show exactly where we are in all of those. We have money that we need to allocate. Uh, Mike's been working very hard with Kimmy and other members of the team to sort of now take that capital list that we developed and prioritize some of those product projects, recommend those to us that thinks we could spend our own money to free up capital money for other projects to do. So that's what we anticipate is getting a, a list to, in front of you all to approve, um, reallocating of the remaining funds. Um, there's one or two funds, the, the one, the only one I can think of off the top of my head is the IT. So to, to firm up that number, we've been saying all along, we're in the phase three now of the IT, is the, the buying of the hardware and the equipment. So we have a specific recommendation on that. And then in addition to that, to reallocate the other dollars. So what I was thinking is, so first and foremost, knowing that that's what our goal was, there's also some items you'll see on the list, only a couple, that were on the original list, but were lower priorities that most of those came off because frankly they were found other funding for, um, found other ways to do them, but there are a couple there. So what I invite everybody here to do in the next couple of days is if there's to, if you have specific projects that you want to be considered, you know, go through them, just let Mike know. I'm almost certain they're already on the list, but just, just do that. And then what I was thinking is we would, we would introduce it on the 3rd, just take preliminary questions and preliminary input so you guys can see the list. And then we'd schedule it again on the, the 17th and even probably have a public workshop where we would allow any, any public comment directly on that item. Cause remember we developed the original list with public comment. And so that will give the public a couple of weeks prior to the 17th to see it, give you guys a couple of weeks to see it and get questions ready. And then, and then the goal would be to take action on it on the 17th of June. Is that good with everybody? You like that approach? Or you want to do it?
Neither term.
Man, that works for me.
Okay. All right. All right. That's all I had. We'll start on this end. Fred?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Kelly?
Um, I participated in the Stony Hill event this weekend and there were a lot of people there. I was so impressed with how many people were there helping out. Um, Ollie just up and down, you know, we had a, a 90, maybe 90 plus down to probably seven.
Oh, that's
So it was really, it was really neat. Um, one of the things I was thinking about when you were saying that is I wonder if it would be good to almost like have a community calendar somewhere so people know of all the different events because the historic society had their flea market. So, you know, there's just so many things going on to make sure that everybody's got a central place.
Catherine's got nothing else better to do but to stop.
It's just, it's just a thought.
Something we should look into to see if we even have the capacity to do it. But yeah, no, it's, yeah. Okay.
So Monday is Memorial Day and are we all marching in the parade?
Yes, thank you. What time do we need to be there? I miss the organization.
Oh, boy.
Mark, come on.
Kickoff, yes. Kickoff. The parade starts at 10. We meet up at the Geisler's parking lot at 9:30 or thereabouts and then organize ourselves in the efficient drill team that we are to be able to march out according to the line of order as organized by our fine American Legion post.
So let's go with that, but I will ask you to just double check that. They, they don't want us there any earlier.
No, those are 9:30 and 10 o'clock step off. Those are the, the numbers that I recall.
Yes, we are all.
I seem to recall that last year our first selectman suggested we have matching t-shirts and one of our, that project is coming along.
No, I did not suggest that. You are remembering that now. Because that might've actually been, because a couple of us were, you know, jackets and ties that were out there and the idea was, well, I don't want to wear them. So I did not take responsibility for the matching t-shirt thing. Happy to do it if somebody, you guys can get matching t-shirts between now and then. But, um, and you're with us, right?
If you'll allow it, yes.
All right. Well, we'll discuss it. Agree with us. What's the chief going to do? Is he just?
We, uh, I haven't asked him yet, but, uh, I was probably going to try to, try to slide into our crowd. Otherwise he'll try to get somebody to march with him as an anchor. It'll be a mess.
Can you import some officers from another town?
I told you guys that story. He's got nobody to march with because his entire crew is actually running the parade. All right. All right. Thank you, Peggy. I almost forgot. So we're all moving it. Mike, there. Mark?
Uh, no, nothing. Uh, no report for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you guys, everybody, for your patience. It's a little longer than we usually go. We're in the public session.
I have something.
You got to come to the microphone.
I have a question.
Come to the microphone. There's no exceptions.
I have to go up there?
Yeah, because otherwise Mark's going to give me the evil eye. Cause there's no mic down there for you. Thank you, Sharon. Sorry.
My question relates to Peggy's question about why would we want a Granby, uh, right to farm ordinance when we have a state one? And my question is, do we have a packet of information that we give out to new town residents?
I can answer that because it's one of the first questions I asked when I began the first selectman. The answer is no.
No, okay. Cause if we, if we did, it would be nice to have it in there so that, I mean, I, I'd like to have every one of our realtors give it to the people who are interested. Then they'd know, okay, we're, we're moving into a farming community. There's going to be noise. There's, you know, there's going to be tractors. There's going to be smells if you live near a farm. That would be good to know right away. Then they can't complain if they got that before they bought their house.
Yeah. No, thank you for that.
Okay, that's all.
That's why I assigned you to it. Cause the devil is actually in the details of that ordinance to make sure that we do it right. that ordinance, to make sure that we do it right.
Okay.
But I, I've already gotten some feedback, which I'll share with you at the latest.
All right.
Thank you, Shirley. All right, anybody else? Does it look like there's anybody on Zoom, anybody else in the room? Don't have any meat for the exact exception, right? Okay, I will accept the motion to adjourn, sorry.
No, no, unrelated.
Okay. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.